But we're not seeing it here.
You must have noticed that himself there.
There we go. Okay. Good morning and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, September 17th. I am Chair Sean Flowerday, with me is Vice Chair and Commissioner Rick Vest, as well as Commissioner Matt Schulte, Commissioner Rome Hamilton, and Commissioner Kristi Yocum. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam Court, please begin.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Printing options are available upon request. The first item is the minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on September 10th, 2024.
Move approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item are the claims, approval of the claims processed through September 13th, 2024.
I move approval of the claims.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is approval of a claim to the mediation center in the amount of $9,050.
I move approval of the claim to the mediation center. Move approval.
Let me, second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
abstain.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is a special presentation, the graduation of the 2023-2024 Leadership Academy class. And I will go ahead and read their names.
You are or I am? I think I'm reading their names.
Do we have a proclamation right now?
Yeah, is, no.
Yeah, let's have someone.
Come on down, please. This is our opportunity to embarrass all of you, so we can.
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Mitchell. I am the Education Specialist for the newly-formed Learning Leadership, not newly-formed, rather, but Organizational Development, rather, Department, and have taken over the Leadership Academy for Lancaster County. And it has been a privilege to lead this group of folks through the last 12 months. To tell you a little bit about that, very briefly, what it was comprised of was a skills-based platform, essentially where we built a leadership identity. We talked about what was necessary in terms of a leadership toolbox, essentially, and how those skills could be applied in their current positions, but also moving forward in future professional endeavors and professional development opportunities. We have a few of our current emerging leaders who can describe the experience a little bit better, certainly, than I can. If Kevin and Jose, if you'd like just to come up and very briefly talk about your experience and maybe how Leadership Academy has benefited you.
You want to go first? Good morning, folks. My name is Jose Carde Bernal. I work for Lancaster County Assessor, and I have the privilege of being one of the first, actually, the first group that Stephanie took care for the leadership class here in Lancaster County. I got to tell you, for me, it was an amazing experience. I learned a lot. I got to meet some of you, which was very interesting, meeting different department heads and seeing how a true leader develops itself. One of the suggestions that I made for Stephanie was to spread the word that I believe every person should take this class, because it is very well intended to grow in the county.
Hi, it's Kevin Jones. I work in the Department of Corrections, learning this and doing this academy for a year, definitely taught me a lot, and definitely helped me move forward in my career. And I definitely suggest that if anybody can be a part of it, please do so, because it definitely helps you and your coworkers around you. And I just want to thank Stephanie and Kristi for putting this together, especially being the first year. I think it turned out to be a good success and the amount of people that graduated. So, congrats to you guys and you too, Kristi and Stephanie. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, I will go ahead and now read off the attendees. And Jose, you're actually the first up here, so if you want to just stay. So, the 2023-2024 Leadership Academy attendees that have graduated here are, is, we'll begin with Jose Carde Bernal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan DeVorek. Kevin Jones. John Limbo. Kristi Post. Joren Reese.
Thank you so much, Seth. Appreciate your hard work.
I work very hard.
Take a bow.
I think I'm doing it wrong.
Dean Rower.
Dean just had a baby, so he's excused.
All good. Kaylee Sawyer, sorry. Karen Wedding. And Nancy Whipperman. And several graduates finished this year but also couldn't attend this ceremony with us. It was Nicole Abold, Kai Ekason, Hamilton Green, and Monae McCollin. So, they're not present, and actually, Dean Rower as well, I hope is at home with his child. All right. One more round of applause for our graduates. Have everybody up here to take a photo, right? County Commissioner standing or sitting, or what do you like? Sitting?
Slide together.
Yep. Nice and close. Yep. All right.
No rabbit ears.
Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good. Definitely will.
Just before we move on to the next item, I just want to say thank you to everyone who was here and attended and took the classes, but also to those who supported them while they took time off from their jobs. We know it takes a team effort to allow people to do all this work. And the simple truth is, we're all human beings. We come here with our own skills and preferences and responsibilities and do the best we can to help build a strong community and county. And this program's just a part of building that. So, thank you to everyone who was a part of this.
Thank you. Okay. We can go ahead and move on down to consent.
Item four, the consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by Commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one with a single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are approval of Amendment Two to County Contract C-23-0776 with Region Five Behavioral Health to reflect an increase in the total amount of reimbursement distributed to the Mental Health Crisis Center. Item B, right-of-way contracts with the following: Larry and Elaine Barron's Family Revocable Trust, South 12th Street and Pella Road, in the total amount of $2,684; Daniel Vacune, Southwest 86th Street and West Pella Road, in the amount of $1,749; Paul and Sharon Ganna, West Panama Road and Southwest 14th Street, in the amount of $550; Item C, utility permit 2558 with Lincoln Electric System for a new underground line and rebuild of overhead facilities; Item D, utility permit 2570 with Lincoln Electric System to install overhead pole line; Item E, utility permit 2573 with Windstream to install new fiber lines; Item F, change order three to County Contract C-24-0098 with Pavers Incorporated to extend the project to November 15th, 2025; Item G, grant contract with Lighthouse Incorporated for the Cop Club and Restorative Practices Programs, in the amount of $27,711; Item H, grant contracts with the following: disrupting traffic for the Resource Center Program in the amount of $10,000; Lutheran Family Services for the Health 360 Campus Behavioral Health Services Program in the amount of $82,000; Item I, grant contract with Omni Inventive Care for the Truancy Diversion Collaborative Family Engagement Program in the amount of $15,000; Item J, grant contract with Omni Inventive Care for the Truancy Diversion Therapy Program, in the amount of $12,845; Item K, setting a public hearing on Tuesday, September 24th, 2024, at nine o'clock a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building regarding setting the final tax request at a different amount than the prior-year tax request.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is Item Five, the Public Hearing Action Items. After a public hearing has been conducted and closed, action on the item that was the subject of the public hearing will be scheduled as a separate public hearing action item. Because the public hearing has been conducted and closed on that item, no further testimony or evidence will be accepted or admitted during the public hearing action item portion of the agenda. And the item is resolution in the matter of Special Permit 24024 for a heliport on approximately 3.27 acres, under the provision of Section 13.012 of the Lancaster County Zoning Resolution on property generally located at 801 Crest Hill Lane, Davie, Nebraska.
Okay. Can we have planning staff just give us just a quick 30-second refresher on things, just to kind of bring the issues at the forefront of mind? I gave them no warning whatsoever that I was going to ask them to do that, so.
Hi, George Wesselhoff, Planning Department. So, this is a special permit for a heliport that it's, this is the first special permit of this type that we're aware of since the 1979 zoning regulations. And the heliport in question is a private heliport. It's not intended for the public, so therefore, the State of Nebraska and contacting the Division of Aeronautics, as well as FAA, they don't license or permit it. It's more of a voluntary registration process in that regard. The special permit was reviewed by different agencies, including the County Engineer, County Health Department, Planning, Building and Safety, and there were just a few minor conditions that were contained in the conditional approval. And we did look at the issue of noise as one aspect. Health Department looked at the noise information that was provided by the applicant and used the city noise ordinance as a measuring stick, even though it doesn't apply at this location. And it was comparable with AG agricultural zoning, so there were no issues identified during the staff review.
Perfect. I appreciate it. Any questions for Steph?
Not a question, but.
Are you just ready to make a motion?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd move approval of the special permit, 24024.
Okay, we'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I do want to disclose that I've had ex parte communication, two emails and one text message that since the hearing and that I, you know, I understand that the hearing was closed and I disregarded those, but just wanted to disclose that those came in.
Yeah, I think I also received an email since then from some of the people who testified.
I think we all got at least one email.
Yeah.
Which is totally fine. We want to hear from them.
Yeah, 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 no.
Yeah.
But the information, I mean, the hearing was closed.
Sure.
So, that's why the acknowledgement.
One of those points that we're not supposed to take more information after we close the hearing, so.
I guess I'd just say a couple of things is, I made the motion to approve the special permit. I, I am not about to overturn what a citizen has done legally for 40 years. The owner was notified of a compliance issue and has done his work to, to get in compliance, and I really appreciate that. And so, that's my kind of first thought is, this has been happening for 40 years. I'm supportive of the continuation of that.
And I guess I would just like to say, well, I personally opposed, I have a problem with a, with a private airfield in a residential area. It is zoned AGR, and according to the special permit, it is allowed. Family airfields, airfields, commercial agricultural airfields, heliports, and private airfields are allowed. And it has been operated for 40 years, and right now, it seems to be, there seems to be some issues. But the special permit, the limitations of the special permit, the stipulations do not really allow us any discussion to change that. That would have to be done by special text amendment, I would imagine, and everything like that, and that is another opportunity for you to discuss this. Furthermore, this, there is an HOA, and this HOA has said that there is some noise issues and things like this. I don't believe it is in the purview of the county board to settle neighborhood or HOA disputes. So, I, that is the reason why I am in support of this special permit.
This has been a really hard one for me personally to decide. I, we have very narrow limitations on how we can decide instances like this. And while I have a lot of concerns about wildlife being disrupted, that every time the helicopter goes up and down, those sorts of things, that's not what we can rule on in this particular case, which makes it challenging.
Yeah. I think, I think it's a really fair question to ask whether or not a heliport should be part of AGR, agriculture residential zoning, but the simple matter is, the issue before us is that it is. It is allowed right now, and, you know, I mean, frankly, 40 years of, of use has to count for something if it hasn't, you know, if we haven't had any major issues up until this point. So, yeah, I'm, I'm going to be supportive of this motion, and, you know, if we wanted to look at a text amendment in the future, I think we could, but that's not going to affect this property, because this property would be inherently grandfathered in under the current rules, so.
I would just add that the board has consistently, in my time, has consistently tried to honor landowner rights, i.e. if you own the property and you're making reasonable use, we try to support those endeavors. And this is one more example where we have an individual who's using their property for their purposes, some, some fallout on those that are in the area around them. It's always a somewhat complicated process for us to sort through. What we've done in the past, and I would propose a friendly amendment today, is try to modify some of the concerns of those who testify before us. And so, one of the concerns that I think we all heard was that this special permit would carry on even if the Krebs move away. And I would propose, and, and one other one that I, I went through all, I have all your paperwork here, folks. I went through it all yesterday just to review. One other one that was pointed out was a timeframe on flights, and they had 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So, what I'm going to do is propose a friendly amendment to the motion to indicate that the special permit would end when the Krebs sell the property, i.e. the special permit is in effect only as long as the Krebs own the property and that the flights are allowed. I'm going to go 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., summer days being what they are, and they're only here six months a year. So, the friendly amendment is that we would approve with the caveat that the special permit ends when the Krebs sell the property and that the flights are allowable from 6:00 a.m. in the morning till 10:00 p.m.
I'm open to that. Let me just ask attorneys real quick. Can we do that? Can we do a special permit with a limitation like that? I would imagine so, but it probably good.
If, if we can't, we're in a lot of trouble, because we've done a lot of them.
It's not our first.
It's the first time I've had one like that.
Yeah, 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 no. Yeah, I think this is, this is, yes. In the past, we have never had an issue amending, putting special stipulations in special permits.
Okay. So, yes, I'm, I will gladly accept that and that.
You accept that? Okay. All right. So, before us is a motion to approve the special permit with the stipulations that the special permit will terminate upon sale of the property and that flight will be restricted, landings really, will be restricted to between, between 6:00 a.m. in the morning and 10:00 p.m. at night. Matches everybody's understanding?
Yeah. And with the understanding that even the people who testified against this didn't say they were against all helicopters in Lancaster County, just the proximity was their concern in this case. So, if this comes before us again, then we're going to have to do a really thorough examination of this issue for any future potential heliports.
Sure. Okay.
One, one comment.
We actually can't take comments on an action, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, because of emergency, because there was just an accident on Davie Road, where there was a death, and say someone in our neighborhood would be injured if I could come and use that helipad at night.
Yeah.
I'm inclined to add the language with exceptions for.
Emergencies.
Life-threatening, life-threatening emergencies.
That's fine with me. Yeah.
Yes.
Life-threatening emergencies.
Sure.
I mean that. And I almost considered adding that.
All right. So, we have a motion, we have a second. I think, does the county attorney's office understand what the direction here is from the board?
Yes, but I would object to further amending the resolution based on new testimony from the public.
I, I would say that, and I'm open to guidance here, because that's the way these things work, but I had that thought in my head prior to it, and I get the idea that we're not taking any more testimony, but, but he's going to be mad if a helicopter's used to save someone's life.
I'd say, thanks for the advice, attorney. We'd like to move forward with it.
Since it's your motion, Commissioner, I'll follow your lead.
If there's no further discussion, please call a roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is Item Six, New Business. Six A, resolution in the matter of adopting a social media policy applicable to Lancaster County agencies headed by an appointed director.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item Six B, resolution designating authorized signatories for Lancaster County Treasury Deposit Accounts as Security First Bank.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is Item Six C, proclaiming September 17th, 2024 as National Voter Registration Day. And I will read the proclamation.
Please.
Whereas, as the November 5th, 2024 general election approaches, the County of Lancaster, Nebraska recognizes the importance of National Voter Registration Day on September 17th, 2024, and whereas National Voter Registration Day is a nonpartisan civic holiday dedicated to celebrating and growing our shared democracy, and whereas this initiative, launched in 2012, seeks to educate citizens about how to register, sign up for election reminders, request mail-in ballots, and learn about early voting options, and whereas since 2012, more than 5 million voters across all 50 states have registered to vote on National Voter Registration Day, including 1.5 million in 2020 alone, and whereas the county's Election Commission invites you to learn more about how to register to vote or to check your voter registration by visiting lancaster NE.gov/election, and now therefore we, the Board of County Commissioners of Lancaster County, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim September 17th, 2024 as National Voter Registration Day.
Good morning, Commissioners. Todd Wilchin, Election Commissioner. Before you have a resolution, recognizing today is the National Voter Registration Day. We have a number of activities scheduled for today. We have two voter registration drives, one located at Benham Martin Library and the other one at Gier Library. But also, there are other activities that voters can do to register to vote. They can visit our office during normal business hours from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. if they have a driver's license. They can also update their voter registration and actually register to vote online through both the Department of Motor Vehicles website, as well as the Secretary of State's website. And it's important, you know, obviously, we know that an important election is coming up on November 5th, and it's every eligible citizen should have the right to cast a vote and make their voices heard at the ballot box. As a representative of government, it's important that those who are eligible to vote have the opportunity to vote. And so, I would appreciate your support of the resolution and our activities moving forward. Just two important distinctions is that there are deadlines for both types of registering to vote. The mail-in, postmark, as well as the online registration deadline is the third Friday before the election, and then in-person is the second Friday before the election. And so, it's really important to make sure that people are registered to vote. And so it's really important to make sure that people are registered to vote. Because if they're not, they're not going to be able to vote if they're not registered. Or if they're, are currently registered, however they're inactive, they'll have to vote provisionally on election day and update their registration. And that's a very lengthy process and we'd like to avoid that if all possible.
I have always appreciated the Lancaster County website, Election Commission website for all of that information. And in fact, I've shared it with people outside of Lancaster County just because it was a good place where they could find it. But I'm looking at the check-fax dot com and it's even clearer there and spelled out so that nobody will miss those important dates. I appreciate that. I would move approval.
And I will second that. And I will simply say too that I appreciate the fact that you are bringing this forward and it can be televised, et cetera, et cetera, to emphasize the importance of voter registration. And I might also add, I think that, you know, the board is committed, most of the members, I think, are committed to serving as, as poll workers.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six D, a special designated license application from Devon Ostrander with No Shave Nebraska for a banquet event at Champion Seed Warehouse on November twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
Move approval. Second.
I'll second. I was hoping someone was here to speak about this.
He is, I was gonna say, he's always here, we've just done it enough times.
Yeah.
I know, but.
He should've come up.
He was hoping, he's hoping we let him off the hook this year.
No, that's all right, that's all right. Devon Ostrander, president of No Shave Nebraska, Lincoln chapter. Just kind of explained last year, held it at the same facility and it turned out to be a great event. We ended up raising just over a hundred and ten thousand dollars in one night. The event, we had just over, between six hundred, six hundred and fifty people there in that warehouse. It was an excellent event. Everybody enjoyed themselves, great meal. Helped out a lot of families that night. About ninety-one percent of funds raised were able to go to cancer victims and their families. Obviously, the other nine percent is about cost and stuff like that, but we are a hundred percent nonprofit. Whatever we can give out, we give out, so.
And we just go to No Shave Nebraska website to?
No Shave Nebraska, so we, so this is, funny you should ask that. We are in the process of a website. We have a Facebook page, but this is only our third year. So there's a lot of different things we've had to overcome and we try not to spend as much, I mean, we try to do everything as donations, you know, we don't, we don't want to, we want to give as much money to these people as we can. So it's been kind of a process, some of, you know, last year we tried to get the website going. It kind of fell apart with different things with, because other past recipients, they want to help out too. Well, one was a web designer and then something happened in her life that, you know, fell through, so just getting through it. But the actual website, we're hoping is going to be done this year, but through Facebook, Facebook mostly, Instagram, social media, but except for our website, so.
Thank you for being here this morning.
Absolutely.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And nine percent administrative cost is quite good, by the way.
The next item is item six E, termination of county contract C dash twenty-four dash zero five seven zero and C dash twenty-four dash zero five six eight with Hope Spoke for services at the Youth Services Center. The termination is effective October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Good morning, commissioners. Brad Alexander, Director of Lancaster County Youth Services Center. Yeah, we, as you know, we got hit with some unexpected news and so we had to regroup and just want to say I appreciate Hope Spoke's, our partnership over the years. It's been a long-term relationship and, but yeah, we had to regroup and look at all of our options and I definitely hope that you'll support the plan that we have in place going forward.
I know you've done a thorough search and looking out for the best interests of the facility. I'm going to move approval.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six F, agreement with Blue Valley Behavioral Health to expand the services being provided to the Youth Services Center and County Corrections under county contract C dash twenty-three dash zero nine three six.
I'd move approval.
Second.
I'd just say, Blue Valley Behavioral Health's done a great job in our community and I'm looking forward to some expanded services up there at the detention center as well as some great supervision from a very experienced staff over there at Blue Valley, so.
Yeah, I think it's going to be a great partnership. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Item six G, agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Nebraska for the Mental Health Crisis Center to participate as a Tri-West network provider for military service members and their families.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six H, acceptance of a grant award from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration in the amount of three hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars for the Lancaster County Recovery Services and Support Center project.
I will move approval, but yes.
Landon Parks, Assistant Director of Community Corrections, just here if you have any questions on it.
Sorry, real quick, we have a motion, do we have a second? And it doesn't matter for staff, but I'm just, I didn't want it hanging out there. Thank you. Continue, Landon.
Just here for you, have any questions about this? This is a SAMSA grant to add peer support services, recovery, support housing and new treatment options for young black men in our program. I think we've had some discussions about this, how no program is a one-size-fits-all, Landon, and some groups maybe aren't as positively impacted by certain programs we had in place. Is that, is my, that's my recollection? Exactly right, and just having a menu of options essentially for participants to navigate through and, and have different options for, for different groups, whether it be gender or race in this case. We have separate groups for our younger population as, as well as our older population, so that's just all part of that. One more tool in our toolbox. Absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is item six I, network provider contract with Regional Behavioral Health Authority to reimburse Lancaster County for services provided by the Mental Health Crisis Center.
I move approval.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six J, sub-grant award from the county of Douglas, Nebraska, in the amount of seventy-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars to support the educational advocacy and racial equity training programs.
Good morning, Sarah Hoyle, Director of Human Services for Lancaster County. This funding will in part go to the Malone Center to help support an education advocate there for both youth and families. That position works not only closely with families, but also with the school district to help our youth who have truancy filings and who also are on diversion to further engage with school. And then the second part of this grant will go to the YWCA to provide race equity training for LPS, for the, directly for the teachers. So we're excited with this partnership. It's a contract with Douglas County because it's federal Title II funding, because the state is coming back into compliance with Title II. They will apply in years to come. However, until then, Douglas County and Lancaster County have been applying kind of every other year. So this was Douglas County's turn to apply and then sub-award part of it to us, so.
I do remember this from last year.
Yes.
I move approval.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six K, an agreement with Athletico Management LLC to perform post-offer pre-employment and return-to-work testing for County Corrections.
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Waiting. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six L, a recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the County Sheriff's Department to award and execute a purchase order to Celebrite Incorporated for a Guardian Pro user subscription.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six M, an agreement with Union Pacific Railroad Company to allow the county to construct, maintain, and operate an underground drainage culvert near milepost forty-seven point one-two on the Lincoln subdivision out or near Raymond, Lancaster County, Nebraska. The cost to the county is five thousand dollars.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer, so Union Pacific Railroad has a standard that if we want to replace one of our culverts and it's in there right of way, we have to pay them in order to replace the culvert. We need to replace the culvert. They're not going to waive the fee, so that's why I'm here with this agreement fee.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Item six N, a sub-grant award from El Centro de las Americas using state grant funds from the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice under grant number twenty-four dash OVP dash five zero one zero in the amount of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars to support the Operation Tipping Point program through the city of Lincoln.
This is a grant award, it's administrative cleanup, which is why it's coming through El Centro de las Americas to us. It's starting with the Crime Commission, going to El Centro, El Centro sub-awarding it to us. Grant was awarded by the Crime Commission, El Centro, that should have been to the county, so it's, that's why this looks like this. And so the funding will actually pay for Operation Tipping Point at the Police Department. It's for two gang specialists. We were able to add somebody this year with this funding, so that's super exciting. Matt Baker, that current outreach specialist, has about sixty, between sixty to seventy-five on his caseload, which is a lot. We're talking about kids who are just right at the risk of joining a gang, either that or already in a gang. So helping to get them out and prevent them from going in. The second piece of this then is to facilitate Cop Club at Lighthouse. That's a partnership with our Sheriff's Department. They work with the kids there. They do pro-social activities in the community. The kids love going there. I think the police have fun too, so.
Oh, there's a lot that can be done with this money.
Yeah.
Would move approval.
I second. I attended that event at Lighthouse last year.
Yes.
And it's interesting because you have all these kids that go to Lighthouse regularly and you have Lancaster County Sheriff's deputies in full uniforms there, participating in the activities, just being part of the group. So it was, it was quite a, quite a scene to take all that in. Exposure for those young people to, to law enforcement officers in a setting where there's not a lot of tension and drama.
Yes, and there's been some really interesting stories. The Sheriff's Office probably could tell them better than I could, but of different connections, positive role models, type of relationships that were made between the kids and the sheriffs and to the point of helping our kids take care of warrants, address things that they have in court. So it's, it's been a really beneficial program.
It's very well organized too, I would say. They, they've got a plan with the deputies.
For the older kids in this group, I wonder if there's any way to maybe incorporate some of these kids in with the County Youth Corps and maybe start talking to them about, you know, possible internships farther down the road and stuff too.
Yeah, we are in the process of starting a youth council, so I don't know if that could.
Yeah, I think that'd be a nice bridge.
Ex-overlay, yeah, so.
Great.
And Commissioner Amundson's part of that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six O, an agreement with Clark and Anderson for architectural design and engineering services associated with the remodeling property located at two-two-zero South Seventeenth Street, Lincoln, for the purpose of operating the Square One Family Resource Center.
Good morning, commissioners. Karen Peterson, Director of Facilities and Properties. This is the design contract for the Square One Family Resource Center. You may recall, this is an ARPA project. This is a competitive request-for-proposal type of project. We ended up interviewing four separate firms that were interested and selected this firm. And at that point, we get to drill down on the negotiation for the fees. So this contract is for the amount of a hundred ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. That covers the architectural design, furniture fixtures, equipment, any audio visual. So it is, it is all-inclusive. And this contract actually runs till the end of twenty twenty-six when every nickel of ARPA money has to be spent. But in reality, we have a much tighter deadline to have everything under contract by the end of this calendar year.
Right.
So.
Time of approval.
And I will second that, yeah, that's super.
Appreciate you being well on top of that, my friend.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is item six P, and I've been told to hold on the last contract, but I'll read the rest. Contracts with the following to provide the annual service of interpretation and translation services. The cost to the county is not to exceed fifty thousand dollars for all contracts. And they are Flix Translations Group LLC, Fox Translation Services, and Global Interpreting Network Incorporated.
I move approval. Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve P one through three. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we held on P four at the county attorney's request, is that right?
I believe so. Yes.
Okay, yep, getting ahead of us. We're good to, we're good to proceed.
Item seven is public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak on items relating to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to one appearance of up to five minutes and that time may not be reserved, transferred, or otherwise assigned to other speakers. These time limits may be extended or reasonably decreased at the discretion of the chair.
Come on down.
Servants of the people. Robert Boer, I have two questions. Number one, why are election officials, namely Evnan and Wiltgen, spending so much time and taxpayer money trying to convince the public that our elections are secure and accurate? Why? Because it is self-evident that they are not secure and accurate. The process is conducted for the most part in secret with secret software, secret hardware, and secret, living, breathing voter rolls, all of which are controlled by a secret private company with financial motives of their own. There is only one reason for such secrecy, and that is fraud. There is only one reason why we, the people, are not allowed to verify the means by which we choose our representatives, and that is fraud. There is no other reason, none. All Wiltgen and, all Evnan and Wiltgen are doing is trying to gaslight Nebraskans into trusting them, contrary to our motto, which is that the salvation of the state is not trust, but watchfulness. Number two, why is government spending so much time and taxpayer money trying to get people to vote? Government's job is not to electioneer. Government's job is simply to facilitate. Government's job is simply to facilitate the voting process. Government's job is to register people to vote who want to vote and keep a clean and transparent list of voters for any given jurisdiction. Then, government's job is to publish a notice about when the next election will take place. And then, government's job is to ensure a process that keeps track of everyone who votes. And that list should be readily and freely available to all citizens. Then, government's job is to ensure a process of counting those votes that is transparent and verifiable by the people at the place where the votes are cast. So again, why is government spending so much time and taxpayer money trying to get people to vote? I will tell you why. The more votes they have to work with in a non-transparent and unverifiable process, the easier it is to manipulate the results without drawing attention to yourself. We have to start thinking. Clay Perry, a cybersecurity expert and expert court witness on EVMs, electronic voting machines, who has spent a number of years conducting security tests on vending, on vendor voting systems, dropped this in my inbox this morning, this morning. For the record, quoting, for the record, Nebraska is in the same bad shape as other states. ESNS runs everything, voter rolls and machines. You are overcharged and getting ripped off. Your Secretary of State and county sites aren't transparent. Your election laws are convoluted. That's an understatement. Clay says it took him, when he was in the testing business on these EVMs, electronic voting machines, on average, it took him five to ten minutes to hack a voting machine. Just a reminder that you are guilty of financing a scam, a huge scam, of treasonous proportions.
Okay. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing no other members of the public wishing to speak. Oh, yeah, come on in.
I'll go ahead and sign this in after I chat with you guys. Hi, good morning. My name's Adam Hints. I'm Executive Director of Friends Wilderness Park. Just coming out to say hi and introduce myself and hand out some maps of Wilderness Park. If you guys are ever interested in doing a guided hike, just reach out and I'd be happy to walk the trails with you. Wilderness Park is Lincoln's largest park, fourteen hundred acres, thirty miles of trails, and it's a cradle of biodiversity in Lancaster County. So it's incredibly important place for many people in the county.
I do get regular invitations on Facebook to your guided tours and have not been able to take advantage of them after November.
There we go.
Let's, do you have a second to stick around afterwards?
What's that? Yeah, absolutely.
Let's, let's get you connected with Sarah Hoyle and Operation Tipping Point. And maybe this is a thing that the kids through that might be interested in.
I would love that, yeah. Nature connection is what it's all about.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none. We'll move on down to announcements.
Item eight, the announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at eight-thirty AM in room one-twelve of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold the following meetings and public hearing on Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four at nine o'clock AM in room one-twelve of the County City Building. The regular meeting and a public hearing regarding setting the final tax request at a different amount than the prior year tax request. County Commissioners can be reached at four zero two four four one seven four four seven or commish@lancaster NE dot G O V. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on L and K TV. L and K TV is available on allo channel two and spectrum channel thirteen hundred. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit Lincoln dot NE dot G O V. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. L and K TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Item nine is adjournment.
Move readjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. We will now convene Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting for Tuesday, September seventeenth.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed on the county's website at Lancaster dot NE dot G O V. Printing options are available upon request. The first item is the minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, September third, two thousand and twenty-four.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
I'll stay.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two is the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rules.
I move approval of the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rules.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three is a public hearing, the following motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Hope Spoke, VSL Lincoln South Lake LLC, Gat South Sudan, Saint Peter Catholic Church of Lincoln.
We'll go ahead and open the public hearing, the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Are any members of the public wishing to speak on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications? Seeing none, we will go ahead and close the public hearing.
Item four is a public hearing action item for the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Excuse me. Move approval of the motor vehicle tax exemption applications?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item five is public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak on items relating to County Board of Equalization business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Any members of the public wishing to speak on BOE? Seeing none.
Item six is adjournment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.